I think that she would do fine in the role moving forward, but the question is, does she represent the vision of where we want to be in the next five years? That's what I'm not sure of. The biggest disappointment that I have with her is the fact that a principal wasn't hired. I know it's been mentioned, but again, I felt that had we had a principal in place during this time period, I think maybe that would have resulted in her being able to look towards other areas that we could have then seen her objectively in and maybe supported her in other areas like fundraising. I think she almost did a disservice to herself in not putting a principal in, but then that makes me question why she didn't put a principal in place, and I'm not sure what the answer is to that. So that would be the one drawback that I see again, and I'm not sure if the vision five to 10 years is something that she necessarily in line with, but I'm not sure.
Okay. Chris?
So I admire her tremendously, and I don't think I've met anybody worse than she. And so I agree with, I think everything positive that's been said about her, I think she's staying tired and she will stick with it. I, on the other side, I do, I am concerned with the lack of charter school experience. I am concerned that she's never been the number one, she's always been the number two. And she's stepped up in numerous situations, gave some great examples of it, and her references to where she was simply outstanding there, but she was not, she wasn't worth the buck landing. I am kind of mystified by the principal situation, that we would get down to two candidates twice and have none of before be acceptable in the end strikes me as very strange. On the other hand, I think that we gave her an impossible task, that if I could go back, I would argue against asking a temporary executive director to hire a permanent principal. You know, I mean, I think that really, really, you know, was difficult to bring to. And then, you know, the parents are saying it's, I'm not sure what to make of it, I just think that it was, you know, coming from his end from her, that her priority was to work with faculty, that's where it starts, and she felt that everything goes out from there, there are only so many hours in a day. I can only imagine that she would be coachable on something like that, because her interpersonal skills are good, her intentions are good, and that it somehow went awry with the parents is, I don't know what went wrong there, but it doesn't, doesn't make sense of those, you know. And I'm just very, very torn with that.
So, so on the positives, I do agree, I don't think anybody could have put more effort into this last year. She was always here and involved and so forth, and I concur with everybody, incredibly caring about the school and the people that have, in terms of my interaction with her in all these cases. Some of the concerns I have, I have to echo with folks. It comes down to prioritization, because you mentioned, you know, typically when a leader comes into an organization, you know, they've got their first 90 days and they know what they've got to really focus on, and typically that's certain organizational decisions which will now allow them to have things in place so they can kind of take on that greater vision and role. And for me, you know, kind of making this, getting a principal in place to give yourself the bandwidth now to focus on those other things that wasn't addressed, I'm not saying it would have been easy to, but it was, I think as a leader, that's critical, and to not do that, I think is, is, is an issue. Another one is, in terms of the parent vote kind of being lowest for Dr. DeMello, I'm concerned about that. Could it be turned around possibly, but when you think about who are our customers as a charter school, actually our customers are our parents. Parents make the choice of where they're going to send their students. So that's, that's a concern. I have talked to some parents over the last couple of days, I've gotten a lot of calls from lots of different parties, including parents, I pinged them on kind of what's, if they could give any insights, and some of what I've heard as feedback was that they feel there isn't a clear vision for the future of the school, and that they're, even though I've heard a lot of folks saying she has a lot of background in the science space, they feel that the emphasis, especially in the upper grade in the science area, hasn't been sufficient, that we're kind of, we're not addressing certain needs. So that may reflect some of what's going on there. I'll also mention, I have, you know, even though a lot of the numbers are positive on the faculty and staff administration side, I have run quite a few calls, I was surprised to hear from people saying there's still some fundamental cultural issues, and a lot of folks would have hoped that somebody in the management effectiveness area, like an HR, a dedicated HR role type place or role would have been brought in by this time, since that was such a high visibility item on a cultural report. And there was a lot of feedback that, there was a lot of concern that that had not been addressed. I'll just say, taking one step back, if we're looking for an ED, a permanent ED, and we had a series of candidates in front of us, I would think we would be looking for somebody with strong charter experience and previous ED experience. So, and when I look at it from that lens, I see there's a challenge, right, there's a gap.
Okay. So we'll move on to Joe McLeary, and why don't we start, Jess, Joe's story's on.
I got a little bit more time with Dr. McLeary than with the other candidates, which I appreciated, it sort of last minute scheduling emergency happened and I got to kind of take him around a little bit, so I appreciated that. I think that some of the, really the pluses that I wrote down, I loved that his emphasis and sort of where he comes from as an educator is about the content and about the excellence in the content area. And that's what attracted me to AMSA as a teacher when I was first hired here. At first I was like, wait, none of his degrees are in education or in administration of public schools, but I almost liked that, he's passionate about what he teaches and what he's learning, so his degrees are in English. That, of course, that's a little bit of a problem that we don't have that science background, but yeah, even when I was walking around with him, asking questions about the content and the idea that that is where our focus is, that is where our teachers' passions are, that is what we want to support, and I just loved that about him. I thought he was very thoughtful and soft spoken and brought a calmness, I loved his answer about the only rule being no yelling and how it's not just that rule, but how that kind of filters out to an entire philosophy or sort of creating of an atmosphere at the school. I loved that he really sort of recognized that as a charter school, we're a school of choice, that people are choosing to come here and that we can, that we should own that. I felt like that's kind of what he was saying, and I really liked that about him. I liked that he sort of had experience with building a new building or building, getting, I feel like that's sort of a valuable experience that we might be able to draw on in the future. I feel like he's somebody that would make a long-term commitment. I liked that he dropped the word alacrity in, you got it right there. And I just felt like...
Could you define that?
No. I just, I found a kindred spirit as a true intellectual. I think, I hope that that doesn't seem...
Stuffy and...
Snidey, and I don't mean it that way, but that's what I want, that's what I love about AMSA, and so I really felt that from him, and so in terms of where we can go as an institution to have that, I really liked. As far as questions, the fundraising seems to really sort of be a weakness. He doesn't have any kind of experience with the bargaining unit, and I, that's a little bit of a red flag for me. But overall, and from when I talk to other teachers in the little bit of time that we've had, I have a lot of positivity there.
So, my turn?
Sure.
From my perspective, I think that definitely kind of very leadership experience in terms of running the school, obviously with some gaps in terms of fundraising, bargaining units. But the other thing that would misinformate is what type of innovation he was actually creating, but when I, as I sit and I listen to Jess, I think he creates a calm within the school, so that innovation is developed from within, and people feel comfortable, you know, sharing ideas and bringing a tool to them, and maybe he's the one that's helping them implement it. So I appreciate his calm demeanor, and I think there's some value to that.
Yep. I would basically, what I've heard very much is same sentiments, his overall demeanor of all the candidates, I mean, just a very calm, placid type of individual. I liked what he talked about philosophically, and just very much, again, this whole point about yelling, which sounds, as he said, very simple, but when you peel the onion back and you begin to look at if you are yelling, what are the things that lead up to that, and why is that happening? So it really showed that he has a very good sense of sort of looking at things, not superficially, but at a deeper level. And clearly has an awful lot of charter school experience. And so there's a lot about him that resonated with me. The gaps, not having the bargaining unit experience, which he very much said that he didn't have, sort of STEM background, which is not a strength of his, but certainly he talked about a little vars background, and very much what he thought to be a compliment to that. And then the innovation piece for me also was one that, a lot of what he talked about when we spoke, when he referenced AMSA, was that things were going very well and we should continue to keep doing these types of things. And I was sort of looking for what new and different was he going to bring, and I didn't hear that. I heard a lot of, you know, you guys are in a great position, you're doing great, let's sort of keep going. So I was just looking for a piece there around innovation, which I didn't hear. Relative to the references, all of them, what I've read, very much sort of underlined the quiet, calm demeanor, very deserved amongst, and so there's a bit of me that sort of looks for a little bit of passion, a little bit more passion in certain areas. So that's something that I'm sort of parting a little bit about, which is his style versus what I was looking for something a little bit higher end.
Ev, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I actually think he would be a fine candidate, I really do, I think he'd do a fine job. I actually, for me personally, I think the calm and the even keel is not what I personally look for in a leader, but that's kind of like my personality. I like someone enthusiastic to be the leader, to be that, you know, charge, be the front runner, be the voice and, you know, pitch in the school and face in the school, and I see Joe is just, you know, he'll do a good job, I have no doubt about that. I don't know, I was with you, I actually took the calm as kind of a negative for me, but I should...
I agree with you.
Just a real couple things. I think he would really be a nurturing force in the community. He talks about, you know, connecting with every single member of the faculty a couple of times a year, I think that's pretty unique. And I do think that he would really try to help improve sort of the game of every individual at the school. That's certainly what he's talked about, and it feels like he's going to make that one-on-one connection to help teachers and administrators sort of up their game. I'm not sure of his educational philosophy, I think in some ways he talks about excellence, but you know, how are we going to get there, other than sort of teacher development, I think, and sort of passion for learning, I didn't get a clear sense. So those were my two observations.
So I agree with most of what has been said, I think the calmness is great internally, it is neutral at best, that's probably right, I think that's probably the reason for someone very vibrant here. However, what he didn't talk about, well, it's very clear on his resume though, is the amount of community partnerships and leadership experience he had involved in when he was at Mystic Valley is really impressive. So the fact that he did as much as he did clearly on the Chamber of Commerce board and did that, so it shows that he's very involved in bringing that broader community together, and clearly is involved, and we can help him, so he knows, you know, those are the goals, actions at the charter level. I just like bringing those up because those haven't been mentioned so far.
All right.
I'm mostly repeating, charter school expertise, I just give you the candidates, the two charter schools, who they're middle ages or beginning ages. Excellent communicator, I like the calm demeanor or the internal communication, I think it would help build, help rebuild our internal issues there, calm voice has helped. Facilities expertise is a plus, I put a doubt, I think he has challenges in the area of fundraising and STEM and a vision for innovative teaching are puzzles there is.
I liked the answer he gave to Jess's question, the one characteristic, which is what he said that he was best at, is the ability to set a good example. I thought that was unique, and I think he clearly will do that, just observing him tonight, it didn't seem like a fabrication to me, that is, he seems pretty true to form, I found that feeling. And I also, I think he understands very well, having had the experience, the role of the executive director. I like what he talked about facing two directions, the outward to the community and the inward into the school, and I think that he will bring that to the table. I agree, he might not be the most charismatic leader, but with charisma also comes higher level of emotions, and we've had that in the past. I'm not sure if that's something that we need to move forward.
Chris?
So, ditto to a lot, he's got a zen-like transparency.
Transparency as well as community.
Yes, and, you know, I think it's, for him, it seems to be all about how you show up, and we use that term a couple of times, you know, don't yell, let's talk, when we make a decision, let's get behind it and go. I was very struck by that, and that all seemed very much to come, you know, from deep within. Appreciate Jerry Markle, because I had kind of forgotten about a lot of stuff that he did in some very, like, unlikely venues, I mean, the Chinese-American, American history thing and the book he wrote, you know, and then the intellectual curiosity is what powers everything on a vote, and that is all really, really good. I guess the thing that scares me is like, what if I'm wrong?
I have that fear for everyone, that's like sort of what...
You know, the experience, the blank spots and the experience are there, I understand the lack of energy, I'm not as concerned about it, but it's like, so if what we see is what we get, and I like it, and it just doesn't, what if it's not?
So I concur with most of what was said, I really liked his look, you know, out and in, and what he mentioned, as you mentioned, also he talks to the teachers, you know, each one, that's a really important leadership skill, and also that management by walking around, he goes around, these are really important key characteristics of good leaders. And I know I've heard a lot, you know, we've had issues in the past where leaders aren't present, they're not around, and that's really important. I believe what you see is what you get, it really seems that way. And I was very impressed when we were in the other room by his comment on, you know, he was talking to parents, some parents shared concerns about demographic changing, from his perspective, well, if we have a standard of excellence, why should that change because of the demographic shifting? We should be doing the best we can for all our kids. I mean, as a parent, you know, I, you know, he had the highest parent rating, but personally as a parent, my child doesn't go here, but that's kind of the attitude I want of the ED, you know, kids are going to do great, period. I don't care where they're coming from, they're going to do great, if that's the kind of institution we have, that's the kind of standards we have. So that was all positive. He does have some gaps, certainly in the fundraising area and the bargaining area. With the corporate, I think, you know, he does have the ability to make connections if he went out on him, and so hopefully, I hope we can maybe cut those gaps.
I liked a lot of what I heard tonight. You know, there was an interesting thing that happened in the back room that I took notice to, where he met about the board members, we all went up and introduced ourselves quickly, and someone made a joke and said, you'd be tested on that, and then he went around and quickly named every one of us.
Not all.
Well...
Not the last eight, but still.
Yeah. How dare you, Scott, that's high standard right there, but...
He named people at dinner too, that we were interested in.
And by the way, Walt kept calling Craig Scott. Anyway, my, my point is, is, you know, there's something about this role, about making connections in, you know, corporate America, it's about executive presence and things like that, and I think Dr. McLeary has that role model, leadership, track record of success, I think calm is, his calm is a strength. You know, I wish he had a better answer on the collective bargaining question, and I kind of wanted to give him a pass on the tenure thing, I thought his answers were good answers, I think we've got to be a little careful there and make sure that he's going to stick around and get us a principal right away, because I think he's got a lot of, you know, he's moving around a lot, but I thought his answers were good, but we've got to keep our eyes on that.
Can you, if you could also address the references?
Yeah. So, so I'm torn here because many of the things I've heard you say about, about Dr. McLeary, I think Dr. DeMello, I mean, we sit there and say, he said, well, you know, my rule is not to yell, well, I'll go as next to Dr. DeMello. So I think they both share that. I think they both share intellectual curiosity, it's shown that, they've demonstrated that. So, you know, when it comes right down to it, as I was sitting here listening and having the luxury of time to reflect, I think it comes down to, he, he clearly has the details of running the school, he has that head of school experience that allows him to do that. And touch on the vision, he isn't quite the visionary I'd like to have, he doesn't have quite the passion that I'd like, like him to have, and frankly, the passion that I, that I have heard Dr. DeMello talk about in terms of that passion for learning. But he does have that calm, so I'm sitting here going, well, do I like the vision in one, or the detail oriented, do I like the passion in one, or the calmness? I am concerned about the lack of union experience, but then he's got the building experience, and he does have the building experience, he didn't go into the discussion, and I'll address that in a moment in the reference part, but, you know, you know, so, you know, I think we have, you know, for me, it's very difficult to sit here and look at something that is a positive, I've written down a whole bunch of positives, but I look at it and I say, well, Dr. DeMello's got a lot of that stuff as well. I am less concerned parenthetically by the lack of science STEM background than I was coming into this. I talked to a number of the staff and I said, you know, is that something that concerns you? And, you know, they said, no, we're looking more for somebody who's a leader, and so the fact that somebody has STEM experience isn't necessarily going to give us what that thing is, we're really looking for somebody who can lead the school, and that that person lacks STEM experience is not as much an issue, and the fact that they have the STEM experience, if they can't provide that, you know, sort of visionary inspirational leadership isn't going to, you know, give them, so. So I do like the community leader, he does have that, and that's one. Having said that, I think, you know, based on, you know, my sense is, is that while Mary Ann, by Dr. DeMello hasn't demonstrated that, that idea of, you know, my role is both an inside role, an inside role as well as an outward role, I think she gets that as well. But anyway, it's difficult. So transitioning into the, into the references, so Dr. McLeary's references were great, I mean, they were very, very hot. Everyone acknowledged that he was very reserved, but said he was great morale builder in under very challenging circumstances. His school circumstances now, he didn't come out as much, are very, very challenging, and he's had to maintain morale among his staff as well as the parents, and he's done a great job interfacing in that.
Current school.
I'm sorry?
The current.
The current school.
There's some question right about whether the school can, can be around next year.
Yes, yes, and he has managed to, he's managed to maintain, and that was actually one of the concerns he had, was, you know, he, you know, just as, just as Walt was not, Walt did not apply for this job, we went out and threw our first consultant and recruited him, okay? Well, so Dr. McLeary was the same way, and he was very concerned about his staff finding out, he acknowledged the process in the way it was, but that was a big concern of his because this is, you know, this is one of those things where if it was any other school, he would not be leaving vocally. He likes what he's doing, he feels as though he's, you know, it's a challenging job to be sure, but he's not looking for something different, he's not looking to leave that as much as, you know, he is obviously attracted by the opportunity. Good motivator for teacher. Both schools that he has been in, both the Mystic Valley and the, well, actually all three of the latest ones had very structured curricula, so none of the people could really talk to his curriculum leadership on that because they were very structured curriculums. Strong communication skills, good sense of humor, interestingly enough, I said, really? But no, he's apparently got quite the...
He's laughed twice.
He's apparently got quite the sense of humor, a very, very good communicator, let's see, at Mystic Valley came in, did a great turnaround of MCAS, not that MCAS turnaround is a big priority, but that was a priority for them, and he executed on that, which was great. Worked well through as lead teacher. One of the interesting things, one of his earlier ones, a person he had worked with at his earliest school, the Heights, and then later on he worked for this person, he said, you know, appearance is really important, that's one of the reasons why he dresses the way, he wants the kids to understand that appearance is important, and so he dresses, you know, he says, I'm expecting you to be in uniform, this is my uniform, and appearance around the school is very important, apparently he treats his custodians very well and has high standards and expectations about how they maintain the building and stuff like that, which I thought was an interesting thing. Moving on to Dr. DeMello, her, you know, we have letters, and you saw the letters were very complimentary. Systems thinker, did a great job of balancing vision with implementation, and views being a transformative leader by the teachers that she served with. People knew her pretty well, acknowledged her, you know, sort of passion and excitement around science and technology. Actually felt that she was very good at the details around school administration, and I think we all acknowledge that a lot of that is around public, traditional public school administration, not charter school, but in terms of understanding details, very credible. But in terms of understanding details, very credible in that area. And clearly, just as Dr. McLeary has, has a strong Massachusetts network, so that's what I think.
So that is the three candidates. Can we finish just on time? Melissa's timer just went off in terms of that exercise. And I think, you know, I'm prepared to ask the question, is there one candidate that we'd like to take off the table and not consider?
I would suggest that Walt is probably the one that I would take off the list.
Is there any objection to not considering Walt Warner further? Okay. And I want to, you know, we'll need to report the reasons, but I think summarize by saying he's the right candidate. Maybe not the right candidate at this stage in our schools needs. So now I think we really need to begin to compare and contrast. You know, and one thing that sort of struck me as we got to this side of the table with Dr. DeMello is conversations turned all towards our experience with her for the last year versus anything that she had to say up here. So we are comparing apples to apples. We have a lot of experience in the good and the bad with Dr. DeMello versus we've interviewed Dr. McLeary. So that's a really hard place to be. I think the only thing that I would say about that is we know what we would get with Dr. DeMello. I think we know that. With the addition of a principal, probably getting a little more, but I think we know what we get. With Dr. McLeary, we don't. I mean, we think, but we're in the honeymoon phase, we're in the interview process. So there's always that risk. I'm not trying to say one's better than the other, but you know, that's the decision we're at right now.
One of my concerns, Craig, is that we are judging Dr. DeMello on a standard that no one could meet. We've asked her to come in here and then we say, oh, you know, you know, some of our questions, we, well, no principal was hired. Could anybody have hired a principal? If she did hire a principal, would that have made it worse? Do you know what I mean? Like, we're asking, we're judging her on qualities that I don't know are fair.
Yeah.
And I, but on the other hand, of course, we don't want to ignore the year. I mean, that's, that's one of the sort of benefits we talked about, about hiring her as an intern, that we sort of had a year and she knew that coming in, that that was sort of on the table. So I have enjoyed working with her.
If she was an interim at a different school and some of this information was reported based off of feedback from a reference, would your opinion change? You know, would you still think, would you still think as a leader at that school, why didn't she have a principal or interim principal or a plan in terms of, you know, being the leader of that school? Would you have questioned that maybe in the reference check? And I think that's, I mean, not necessarily, not necessarily what she's done as a personal relationship, but in her leadership of the school. What are the things? I think that's what I heard on that side of the table. And I have those concerns, too. Like, as a leader, was there a different plan that could have been set in place so that she could have really led the department? We saw her.
So I look, I look at this slightly differently, I guess. I'm looking at two candidates. Okay, look, we agree that all three candidates, but particularly these last two are both great candidates. We're lucky to have two great candidates. One of the things I'm looking at is, you know, early on as I was writing notes and stuff like that, I was looking at the things that Dr. DeMello had in terms of, you know, shortcomings. So, you know, so charter experience, maybe great at vision, maybe not so great at execution, although again, her past history suggests she's pretty good at execution as well. But certainly did do a good job here. And then I look at Dr. McLeary and I look at certain things that he's missing. You know, he is very detail oriented, hasn't either in this interview or in previous interviews really been able to articulate sort of this innovative vision, whereas I felt as though Dr. DeMello was. Now, which one of those, I'm asking myself, which one of those is one, is it, you know, which one of those can somebody coach? Now frankly, I think.
Did you say coach?
Mentor. We got a coach or mentor. She got a, or she got a coach. Could she round out her charter experience yet? Could she get, you know, could she get someone in addition to the principal to help her sort of with the details and maybe some of those things? I'm thinking, yeah. And then I look at Dr. McLeary and I'm thinking, you know, I don't see sort of that passion and that innovation. Now, I'm not saying that that's a deal breaker for me, but that's something that if it is important to us, I don't think you're going to get anybody who's going to be able to coach somebody to be more passionate and innovative. Now, again, suggesting that that's the decision criteria we have to use there, I'm just saying there are some things that are coachable and there are some things that I don't. And that's where I.
I would like to come back to, was it difficult? Did we, you know, create a difficult circumstance for Dr. DeMello? And Pauline and I coached her on, I would say, eight or 10 issues this year. I don't know if it's a work of that, but eight or 10 kind of major issues where I think she had a choice of spending time on this or that. And many times, that choice was, you know, something we were coaching her on. Is this where you want to spend your time versus over here? And I think some of her decisions were always sort of back towards what she knows, compliance, right? And that's why.
Public school.
Sort of the public school thing is that the, you know, the superintendent worries about not getting acquired by the state in some ways, compliance with law, right? And we still have law to comply, comply with the regulation and policy as well. But I think that at a number of times, she gravitated towards this. And, you know, it's, the question is, is through additional mentoring and coaching, when we have a principal, is she going to be able to sort of say, "Let me, let me do what's most important for the school right now. And if I have to put on record and we're not in compliance with the calorie count in the lunch and we're going to fix that in six months, but I right now want to worry about that department, right? Because that's the most important thing to worry about today." Then are we going to, are we going to get a leader in her that is going to sort of switch her, her thought process on what's most important to do? And that, you know, as the chair, that was my biggest concern for her. And I don't, I mean, she was absolutely willing to engage and listen and talk through this. And when challenged directly, I think she has a strong point of view, right? Which that's respected, but she was certainly willing to listen and sort of work through that. I don't think we ever said, "Do this" because it's not really our role. We're kind of coaches and guides. But it was certainly a respect of the high level in a way. But, I mean, I think that's a big concern. Is she going to be able to re mold herself as a, as a person that's not so much worried about compliance and making choices about what to do and more worried about, "How do I, you know, tackle the tough challenges of the day?" Not, not worry about what, you know, thing I have to sort of raise as an issue that a lawyer said this, "We might need to do this type of thing."
Yeah, I'm very concerned that her default position is risk elimination and not risk minimization.
Or management, yeah.
One of the things that sort of strikes me.
And so just before you go on, we sort of have no idea of the other candidate, if they're going to have exactly that same. Just because they're a charter leader doesn't mean that they're going to go towards, "Let's tackle the most important problem versus the most urgent." So, you know, that's what we have as.
Well, so I just would offer up that references were very strong in his, his management, his leadership of the schools. And my sense is, is that, you know, he did take to prioritize the things that he was, you know, that he saw had to be done. Now, these were schools that were, that were not necessarily trying to go up to that next level. So neither Mystic Valley nor Lobes Legion were trying to go up to that next level. So there's a difference there between what we're looking for.
Go ahead. Ev was late.
As I think about what Ken said, it really strikes a couple of things for me relative to different characteristics that we both bring, I think, as we sort of knew walking into this, that we have very good candidates on the slate. There are gaps in their backgrounds in various areas. And a lot of what we're talking about now is really about leadership, which is very much situational. So on one hand, I think about Dr. McLeary relative to his persona and his demeanor and some of his experiences. And if you think about being in a situation where you have a lot of chaos or a lot of disarray, then his leadership skills and his demeanor are very apropos because that calmness is going to help bring probably much faster resolution than someone who has a much more vibrant type of personality. So in that type of situation, we've talked a lot about.
And how would you compare that with Dr. DeMello, though?
Depending on the situation. So, so my contrast to Dr. DeMello, and I think she's probably somewhat in the middle, meaning that I don't see her as the table pounder, the holler of the, sort of frantic person, but she's not yet down on the skill that he is relative to her calmness. She's probably somewhere in the middle. If I think about the situation from a leadership standpoint that she's had to deal with relative to the principal, which we've talked a lot about, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the ED, not the ED, but our board task force presented her with candidates to then vet and make the final decision. So in this case, she looked at those candidates and she made a decision that was she didn't feel that any of those candidates would have been the right fit for AMSA. So on one hand, if you make a decision, in this case, she would have made the decision that, okay, I'm going to pick one because we need a principal. But that may have been contrary to her own, in this case, her gut, who said, "This, we don't have any of the candidates that are the best fit."
Although that's not accurate because she took over the search. There were really three searches.
Okay.
There was a false start. We had our committee, we stopped when she walked in the door and she took it over, reorganized the committee, directed its search. And that was the first time. And she really wasn't charged with it.
Okay. But, okay, yeah. But I guess the thing that I'm thinking, the point that I'm sort of driving at, as you do that due diligence and there are things that we don't know, some of us don't know behind the scenes, that evidently there was something there that she did not feel that either of these candidates were the best fit for AMSA. So now you have to, in a leadership position, sometimes you make a decision that's not going to be very popular. In this case, she made a decision of no principal, not a very popular decision. On the other hand, she could have made a more popular decision, selected one, but it may not have been the fit. So in some ways, a little bit of a lose-lose situation. She went with what she felt was correct.
Well, I don't think, I don't, for the second search, the one that ended two, three weeks ago, at the end of that search, there wasn't a viable candidate. The two that were, the finalists, fell out within a week of each other for one of very public reasons and one for very private reasons. And knowing the detail, I mean, the whole, the whole community should know the public one, that the guy appeared on national TV is a very polarizing and divisive issue around cyberbullying. And that feels like that's a good decision not to hire that person because we don't need a lot of controversy in press right now about cyberbullying. That's not what the community needs. And the other one fell out for very personal reasons that she didn't share with many because it's, you know, those are private. But, you know, I can say, having the high level understanding of those, that it was the absolute right thing to not go forward with that candidate.
So I think that's important to share because it helps put the conversation that we had around the principal in context. And these are all so much finished. And so both of these are sort of leadership types of issues.
Hard, I mean, those are really hard issues, hard decisions to say, "I'm not going to pick the one." And, you know, some people could stand on the sidelines and say, "Well, she was trying to preserve her job," right? Or she was, there was a rumor that I heard that she was getting paid twice, once for her job and once for the principal. She, you know, she wasn't at all. But she did it at her own great expense. Not to mention the fact that what principal, what, you know, high caliber principal would like to come in under an interim ED and then not know if they have a job three months later. I mean, it's a, it is a very diff, I mean, I think it's, it's relevant once you say, Rick, about, you know, this is something that they got to do. And we talked to her about, you know, put all your effort in that. Pauline and I did, but it would have been a very difficult thing to attract and retain the high quality candidate more, but maybe not an interim.
So I'll play devil's advocate here for a second, just to be fair. So one could argue, so one of the challenges, to be very honest, I'm wrestling with is, is that, you know, she had experience as a assistant superintendent, not as a superintendent. They're very different roles. And the level of experience you get as an ED is better, I mean, they're just, they're just different. Would you have had a different experience with somebody who came in as an interim ED with experience as an ED or an interim ED? And they come into a situation and you've already had a challenge with one principal search and they're going to say immediately, "Let me just bring in an interim."
No search, just call a friend.
Just call, because, because we're playing two, two sides here. We're first saying, she's an interim ED, she really, should she, shouldn't she bring in a permanent ED, uh, principal? Well, then she should have brought in an interim principal, right?
There's a solution.
There's that judgment call. It's easy for me to say that, but I'm just, I'm just saying that, that's kind of the value of having somebody who's an experienced ED, that they have a lot of experience, they can sometimes make these sort of judgment calls.
Yeah.
Basically, just don't.
Yeah, it's sort of the argument of, I've heard people say, "Well, Dr. DeMello doesn't have STEM experience." And I'd say, "Well, she's got a year now." And she doesn't have any ED experience, well, she's got a year now, right? I mean, she doesn't have any STEM experience, she's got a year now.
And I think the other thing with HR was an issue, at least for our, I'm concerned. There was a lot of HR things from before. And I think school would have been well certified in HR, of course. And I think that put out there enough occasion.
The survey brought that forward.
That was very specifically one of Diane Nevers' specific recommendations.
It certainly was, and I wasn't acting on it either. So, I mean, if it had been a principal, but a HR person came in, I would have felt that that was a decision that was well made.
So I think we're bringing up some instances of what, you know, our tier quarterback, right? We can't do that for the other candidate. And so, you know, I think the question, we should try to change the question a little bit around not what we see in leadership qualities of Dr. DeMello versus Dr. McLeary, not sort of the misses. Because I think if we're to bring in Dr. McLeary, he's going to have some misses, too. He's going to make some mistakes. A year from now, we'll sit here and he will have made some mistakes. So I think we need to think about the qualities where we see positive for Dr. DeMello and Dr. McLeary. Before I go.
So can I just say a quick comment on that?
Okay. I want to, I want to sort of take a time check here.
I agree with you, there will be misses on every set. The thing that comes to mind of, as you mentioned, the HR call, the principal call, is there an issue with some level of experience? And I think that could, that whole issue of prioritization. This is a fundamental skill. You can coach it over time, but I mean, that's, that's something that's pretty important. These are, these were high priority items, right? Does it speak to that sense of prioritization for this type of role?
I think prioritization is an easily coachable skill, actually. Technically, it's really.
You don't have to do it eight times. You just told me. I'm just saying devil's advocate, you said eight times, you're going to be coached on that, that's a lot.
I think we should look at both the positives and maybe there's our experience with Dr. DeMello. I mean, it's valuable data we've got. I will echo the HR, I mean, the HR solution was very clear. The report called it out, said hire a senior HR person. That would be an easily solvable problem. The principal search, the first time attempting it was great. They had a good process. Dr. DeMello came in and provided us some rigor and privacy statements and structure to do it in. That was good. But when that one failed, this is where I think was a challenge for her. She did exactly the same thing again. We didn't go to a plan, she had no plan B. We didn't go to a plan, she had no plan B. We could have hired an interim, we could have hired a interim principal, we could have done the search differently. We could have done something.
To be fair, I think bringing in an interim principal from her past was not going to be a smart move except by the school. I mean, look at what the board received, and it's just, I don't think that was a unique situation.
So, I was going to take a time and process check. Getting on towards the left. What I wanted to ask is, do people feel like they've made their decision? Or do, is-
No, I have not.
Okay, so, I mean-
I'd like to talk a little more.
And I'm not, I'm not going to call for a vote. I'm just wondering if people feel like they're sort of close to who they think they would like to vote for. I don't, I don't think we're ready to vote, but, I mean, it's like, we're a long ways away, or a lot, are a lot of people a long ways away from wanting to raise their hand for one candidate or another, or they're-
I can't even answer that question because I want to talk a little more because I actually have some like questions that I actually would like to, you know, have some more-
Well, what I'm trying to gauge is, is that a little more, is it an hour and a half? Or is it four hours? Or is it ten or fifteen minutes that we want to talk?
I think it could be maybe another hour, it's just off the top of my head. But I think we need to go down the path that you're talking about relative to sort of comparing the qualities that would be comparing apples to apples for both of them. So, I spend a lot of time talking about the existing experience of Dr. D'Amillo. I think we need to walk that path and see what happens.
Yeah, I'm not trying to close discussion, I'm trying to just figure out if we're close or not. People, what about over here? Are you all close to making decisions? You're close, you're close?
On the edge, so. Far away.
Can we reflect on what we need as an ED versus doing a pro and con, pro and con? And I think going back to what Ken said, what are we looking for? Somebody that we want, that has passion and vision, and we have to coach on some of the other things, or someone that's going to run the school and will work and build that vision with them. So, I think that's how I'm looking at it in my mind, but if we talk about it that way, we're not going to sit here and talk about things that Dr. D'Amillo didn't do, and more about what can they do in the future. So, stop reflecting on the past and what do we need moving forward? As a board, we talk about a strategic plan, and what are we, you know, how are we going to get there? How do we, how do we make this school evolve in the next five years? What type of leader do you need?
I guess I would like us to talk about the negatives a little bit differently. To me, the discussion around the negatives are only useful to the extent to which it helps me understand what they're going to do in the future, okay? The fact, I mean, I hate to have you guys judging me on my performance because I certainly don't always prioritize things well, and I certainly make poor decisions. You know, my question here is, my question here is, is does this give us information to, you know, to sort of, to sort of guess what's going to happen in the future? And so, when I hear you talk about, well, we coached and she's been open to the coaching, then, you know, that's sort of a plus for me because at least she's responding positively to the coaching. She may not be, you know, may not be, you know, engaged in, you know, may not, you know, may not be moving forward as quickly as you want, but at least she's not sitting here saying, no, sorry, I'm going to do it this way, this is the way I've always done.
Yeah, I don't think-
And so, so I would like us to sit here and sort of think about, you know, the positives and negatives, only to the extent to which they give us information that would be useful about the future.
Okay, Scott, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I kind of look like it's like the known unknown. Like, that's what I'm kind of struggling with, the known and unknown. And I look at Dr. D'Amillo, and to me, it's clear, like, well, the faculty administration, they think it's very positive here. And I'm thinking to myself, I'm trying to think back to where we were, where would that be before she came here?
For the previous?
Yeah, I mean, just where the faculty was and the administration was before she came here, and I've got to believe that's, like, it's a huge change in the-
Be very careful there.
Well, I'm just trying to remind you the way I look at it.
Well, I think we'll get on a piece of history. About three years ago, we surveyed, I think it was just the administrative staff in regards to previous ED, and we got glowing reports.
Glowing.
Absolutely glowing reports.
Glowing reports.
So, take, take survey results with a grain of salt.
It's great talking about it. I feel like, I'm not ready to vote now, but I feel like in a half an hour discussion, I will.
Okay, Scott, where are you going to go?
And then obviously, I take a look at parents, and you talk to parents, obviously, that is needs to be, you know, coached in. But my, like, I'm thinking to myself, if there was, if there's a principal in place, how would things be different? Would she be coachable to fix that? And, I mean, because, you know, when I listen to it, and I kind of go back to, you know, when she was the interim, and, you know, I mean, I remember the buzz in here that night about the vision, and like, listen, there was passion, there was vision, and I'm thinking to myself, like, if that person, if she wasn't the interim, where would that have been? And I'm telling you, I think the buzz would have been different. And I'm thinking to myself, did some of this stuff not happen because, like, a principal wasn't in place? And I don't know, and that's why I'd like, I want open kind of dialogue.
So, can I, so, these results, because I have gotten many calls, I don't want to get into too much detail, but I don't want to compromise anybody's confidential, why could people give interviews? There's only so much of a sample for certain aspects, certain aspects-
Of ours.
-of administration stuff, of the faculty, of the administration. So, I don't want to get into too much there, this isn't the whole interest. So, I would just-
Mike, just do this, okay? Just be careful about that.
I did, you know, Ken asked a lot of good questions the last couple days. One of the ones that you asked, you were trying to go after the fact that she's interim, so what's going to change when, you know, she gets seated and goes, becomes our new ED? And she was very emphatic that when she took over this role, she didn't view it as an interim-
Yeah.
-role, that she, she wanted to treat this as though she came in, this was her. And so, that for me, and by the way, I'm not disregarding the challenges of interim, but it paints a different picture in terms of how she viewed this role, and it provides for me a more accurate picture of a little bit of what we're getting on the good side and maybe the constructive side. So, you know, I, I don't view this, this, the fact that we're contrasting that, you know, it's hard to do apples and oranges, if she had an awfully good, amazing year, you might come back and say the same thing. Well, you know, she's had a wonderful year, but you haven't seen Dr. McLeary, and no one did that, and I think it's, it's a tough road to go, to row. So, for me, I say that we have a track record. I feel like we have a very good sense of what we're going to get if we seat her. It feels to me like it's this incremental, steady growth. And what I struggle with, and what I've been hearing from all folks, is this desire to really relaunch AMSA, that we're stuck in this olden pattern right now in terms of building, because without having a principal, of having this interim ED. And I just, I think part of what drew me tonight was a sense of excitement and enthusiasm for the future of Dr. McLeary. It felt different to me, and I, I think that, that's how I'm weighing it, is I would choose to go with his track record and what I think he brings to the table over the steady type of safer route.
You know, I don't, I don't know how you can say that when, you know, so, Dr. D'Amillo
sat there and talked about, you know, sitting and talking and teaches about what's the one thing you can do in your class to move things up to that next level? That's not, I mean, that's not just incremental, that's like, what, you know, have you thought about what you can do? And she's the one who's sitting there talking about, you know, you know, we ought to be viewed across the country, people ought to understand. Now, McLeary said the same thing. My point is, is that, you know, she's certainly looking at not incremental, let's take the next, you know, the next big step forward. I mean, she's certainly talking about very, very large steps that are, to me, inspiring, to me are very visionary and so forth. She's talked about, you know, one to, you know, one, one-to-one technology and getting technology at the hands of our kids and getting them connected with the world and so forth. And yet, she's also taken steps to try to put in place the infrastructure that will allow that, and actually take steps to do that. And that's what I see as somebody who's got the vision, but also is sitting there saying, okay, let's take steps towards that, and doing it in a time that's very busy, so.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I guess I just want to piggyback a little bit to what Ken just said, and I think about, for those familiar with manufacturing, when you make sort of incremental steps from a continuous improvement standpoint, the Japanese refer to that as keikaizan. When you make radical changes, it's been a while for you, I want to say keikaku. And the radical change that I see Dr. D'Amillo talk about is a little bit of what Ken just go to, which is, how do we sort of go to the next level, whether it's from a one-to-one, whether it's from connecting our students here with students in Europe, Asia, from a classroom standpoint, from a research standpoint, so. I, I sort of see and get a strong sense of she has in her mind from a technical standpoint or a technology standpoint, where she sees, where she wants the school to go to. My challenge with Dr. McLeary was that, again, his, for me, his viewpoint was things are going well, let's continue, and I think you guys should continue to do what you're doing, but I didn't get a sense of that innovation. I really liked what Melissa said a while ago, which was, let's spend some time focusing on what do we want one in a leader and two, where we want the school to go to? Are we looking for the school to go to another level of innovation? Are we looking to drive to sort of a, you know, more or less continuous path forward, which may or may not be as innovative? So, maybe we need to define that a little bit, to change the dynamic of discussion to what do we really want, and then line the candidates up against that.
And what connections does Dr. McLeary have in terms of what we were thinking about legislative? It seemed like he had an avenue maybe to the state house. I mean, I think how we, I mean, that's a discussion we might want to have and bend a little bit. I mean, that can be helpful for the school in terms of moving forward. It seemed like, from what he was saying, with the partner of education being right there, he had some experience that I felt was at least brought to the table in understanding that charter schools aren't necessarily looked upon, from his standpoint, he's necessarily carefully, I like that he had a little real role he got, does that translate into a vision? I don't know.
Melissa, did you mention-
I was just going to say Justice Blake.
Oh, okay.
I, I've heard a couple times that people didn't really hear that Dr. McLeary had a vision, and, and I kind of disagree with that. And what I really heard from him was a vision where, that really reminded me of the original vision of AMSA, which is that it was led by, by faculty members, by content area specialists who knew where to drive that field. And, and when you're hearing him say, well, we're already, you know, keep doing what you're doing, that's good, what I heard was Ken saying, you guys have faculty members who are experts in the sciences and the math and, and the history, and let's let them be a part of this driving and the innovation. That's where the innovation needs to be, not me saying this is where you will innovate. And I just want to add to that. When we, when we interviewed, we talked to, he talked about what he did at the high school at Mystic Valley, and what he talked about is that the potential of the vision for that school had not been realized in the high school. And he went into the classrooms and helped them get to the point that that mission was realized. So, where he might, and this is where Dr. D'Amillo has a benefit, because she's in the school, she understands what can happen, she understands some of the programs that are already in process that she can expand on, he doesn't know about. So, now, now there's apples and oranges waiting in her benefit, I think, because she, she's had the opportunity to understand what the curriculum really is, work with the department chairs and the faculty, and talk about some of these programs, because some of the programs that she mentioned are things that have been pivoted for the last two years.
So, I think it goes back to a little bit of style, and when you read the references, one of the things that comes out clear is that Dr. McLeary works through his individual, as you mentioned, department chairs, and they, one of the references is at an arm's length. And so, he has a very different style. And so, for me, I haven't, I don't necessarily hear the passion of here's where we can go. As you're saying, he's seeing it through the department chairs. So, for me, I guess I'm looking, I'm looking for something a little bit just-
I think she should have been that with every teacher, like, I didn't get that at all, but it was from the department chair. I like much more to record your-
The reference, you're talking about the references.
Right, I'm talking, if you read one of the references specifically, he talks about it at arm's length.
So, if I could just kind of piggyback on what you guys were saying, I remember when we were talking about this, the thing that I wrote about him was, he was, he was an enabling leader. So, he enabled his people to lead, and in a sense, isn't that what AMSA's kind of was doing in the past? You know, in talking to parents over the last few days, and my perspective or impressions on some of the issues parents had was, were that, you know, we were, we had, you know, a really great computer science department. Not saying we don't still have one, but we had a really great one. And part of its greatness was, it just kind of was from inside, it was, it was encouraged by the leadership, but it was kind of internally pushing itself out, right? And that's kind of what you want to happen with all the departments. Maybe I'm hearing something with a filter with Dr. McLeary, but I was getting the sense that he's an enabling leader, he wants us to bring us to the national stage or whatever, but through, not his vision necessarily, his specific, but by his enabling the right sort of stuff. So, I, I don't know, when I was hearing stuff from him, I didn't get a sense he didn't have vision. I think it's naturally kind of aligned with the way AMSA's done some of its stuff where it stood out to me.
So, if you took away, so, what you just said about national stage, enabling and so forth, and Dr. D'Amillo said the same thing. I'm not trying to say that Dr. McLeary doesn't have a vision, okay? I'm not sure he's quite as passionate about that, but I'm, you know, he has a, a vision. I'm not trying to argue that point. It's just that when, you know, by saying that, I think we also need to acknowledge that Dr. D'Amillo has also expressed a, you know, I want to see our teachers out publishing, I want people to see, you know, to, you know, to hear about AMSA on a national level, you know, and she's saying many of the same things. That is, to me, part of what's making this a tough decision here because there are, you got two leaders here.
Are teachers saying that we want to publish?
Ed, what was the question?
I don't know that I hear a lot of my colleagues saying, I want to publish.
But, but Dr. D'Amillo clearly stated it in part her vision, that she wants us, she wants us, AMSA to be on the national stage, and one of the methods, part of the methods to get there that she viewed was for teachers to publish, for teachers to attend national conferences, for teachers to present at national conferences, and part of, her articulating vision is to help to boost the national stage.
It was more substantial.
It was, she had very specific, concrete goals toward getting us to the national stage, very articulate statement.
Melissa?
I like that she had a vision, but I think that it will boost the board and the community to develop our vision as a community, and I think that we can do with either one of these candidates. I think what I see with McLeary is that he has the experience to do the other things as well without the coaching, and that's, that's what, that's what kind of puts him on a different level.
So, the fact of that, see, the biggest challenge I'm finding is going back to that prioritization stuff. See, effective leaders, one of the reasons we're really effective is they don't have to prioritize. So, two leaders maybe would say, I want to get this done, but the one who can prioritize better gets all the noise out of the way and gets, delegates all the stuff they have to to realize that vision, and I'm just kind of concerned about that prioritization piece.
And something that I noticed, this is a, I mean, this is like another apple that are, oranges and oranges, and, you know, here's Dr. D'Amillo, is that, yeah, so she says she's got the vision that she can, you know, articulate this through the four things that she all has said. Around climate stuff, I think she can be very procedural sometimes and not be looking at the heart of the matter. And I think, I think Cleary would look at the heart of the matter again.
And I think, I think Cleary would look at the heart of the matter, and that's the only thing in my mind. And we're doing the updates on the climate stuff, it was, I agreed with what the plan was, which was, we're gonna line them up, we're gonna do them, and check them off, but it ended up coming up kind of mechanistic and not really connecting to the concern. This is how we're addressing how people feel, by doing X and Y. And so, there's just the, the connection of the small things to the big things. I didn't see that there in her in those cases. In him, I saw a very deep sense of the big things. Again, I haven't seen her reaction, so.
Go ahead, Scott.
My, my concern, and I think Joe would actually be fine, like, I think he'd be good. My concern is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the school right now is like going through some problems that he's currently at. If he was this great leader, would they be going through these problems? Or would he be solving those problems? Would they need, would that, would that school be in the situation it is right now if he was this great leader?
So, so, okay, so, you know, having investigated this very hard question, okay, so, it's a great question. I, my feeling is, is that many of the things that are happening are outside of his control. He had a contractor who was supposed to do some things with the building, who reneged on that, okay? And he, he also has a, that school is also run by a charter management organization, okay? So he, you know, so it's not an independent...
It's a for-profit management organization.
Yeah, so, you know, he's not totally independent there either. I feel as though, the feedback that I've gotten is that he has done everything he can to take care of not only the things that he has under his control, but to try to, you know, try to expand his span of control out of the things he talked about. You know, "Hey, it's not my job to be the construction manager, but I'm out there making sure that they're pushing and continuing." So he's certainly not throwing up his arms and saying, but he's rolling up the sleeves, and that's definitely distinct, the stink of person I get is he's a roll the sleeves kind of person. Okay, so, I think he's doing the, the best he can, and the board member I talked to said that, you know, they're very satisfied with it.
Colleen, you've been quiet for a while.
I know, I'm completely torn, I just have to go either way.
Is it, I mean, is it, one of the things I think is... Yeah.
Maybe go to clarification, Ken, because that's been blanked out.
Well, but to reflect on why he said he would consider leaving, and it was, it was more about sort of the school, McCleary with his principal, which is 300 K through four, and goes to K through 12, we can go up to 12,000 or something like that. There's been some, some build-out issues, which has slowed the growth of the school facilities, I think, more than anything. But what were his comments on why he's leaving, or why he would consider leaving?
So, so, I believe, yeah, so, I believe that the, probably accurate, the character of this is probably accurate, where he's not looking to leave. He's open to leading for the right opportunity, and frankly, AMSA is an opportunity people would do. He's, he's not, he's not actively looking...
Why is the school in danger of closing, that's what, that's what came up, why is that?
Because there's infrastructure issues there around having, you know, having a building, and having finances for the building and so forth that are...
With a nerve passing?
I'm sorry?
It looks nerve passing.
Right.
They can't have the next classroom.
So there were promises about the, so, so for example, you know, they were supposed to have the building ready for this past year, and, and so they ended up having to get these temporary quarters, and it was very hard to get to them there in time so that these kids could show up to school at a reasonable amount of time. And so he's having to deal with that, having to deal with getting the faculty on board, and they're, they're a growing school each year, they're, you know, they're projected to have another grade.
So one of the contrasts, I think, you know, we are talking a little bit about vision, Dr. D'Amillo, I think she's, she's sort of made the case to the board for a one-to-one environment, or world-to-one, or one-to-world show. Basically, we should put tablets to laptops and make hands of the kids and begin to grow that way, right? And she feels that it's enabled her for differentiating curriculum and all kinds of other things. So I think she's, she's clearly passionate about that, and sees that as a gateway to take the AMSA to the next level. It's gonna take two or three years to do that, I think. It's not one year, I don't think six months from now we're gonna have that, there's all kinds of big decisions to make, money to be had. So I think that's a clear path that we would be on for Dr. D'Amillo. You know, and that's one example of one thing that she's passionate for, she believes that sort of opens the window to the world for the kids as well, for some of this, you know, intercontinental collaboration, classes and projects and all that sort of thing. So I think we have that clear vision with her, and I guess the question is, and the board's not been asked to weigh in on that, truthfully. That's something she's articulated, and we asked her to do that, we asked her to, you know, put forth some of the things we think are really important for the school to do.